Good afternoon, everyone. Is this mic on? Yeah, okay. It's now six o'clock and we're going to go ahead and start this meeting. We have our second item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of April the 9th, nineteen, 2019. I'm not sure if you all have had an opportunity to read them, but we need to have someone to move and then we need a second to approve the minutes as they were presented.
So move.
And Wayne?
I'll second it Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so order the minutes have passed. We are now at the point in our agenda where we will elect a moderator. We would need nominations from the floor for our moderator for tonight. When, if whomever it is that takes the position as moderator will come forward and will handle the remainder of this meeting. Is there any other nominations? Is there any other nominations from the floor? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Dr. Underwood, can you please?
You want to come forward?
Come forward and I will give you the oath of office and you will then take the rest of this meeting. You need to come around because we've got to be here.
I like to swear.
You want to, come on.
Okay.
Come on over to the floor.
I have a handicap condition right now.
Okay.
So I'm doing the best I can. So right here?
Yes, right here.
Okay.
This is your agenda, so you will follow the rest of this agenda. Okay. Now I'll give you. Aye, Dr. Evelyn Underwood.
Aye, Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of moderator.
The duties of moderator.
At this town meeting.
At this town meeting.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. All right, I need you to sign right there, Dr. Underwood.
Can I put the Reverend back there?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and you handle the rest of this agenda.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's six o'clock, so good evening, everyone. Welcome to Cunningham Township Annual Town Meeting here in the City of Urbana Council Chambers. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Public participation. Madam Clerk?
If any of you would like to address this committee tonight, there's the green cards on the table in the back. Fill one out and give it to me and we will move from that point on.
So if there are none, other than you guys got it on the way.
Are you aware the public can't view the meeting electronically? And that the city website is down?
Excuse me, we can't hear you, sir.
Sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to be out of order, but there's no way online for the public to view the meeting by Zoom? And the city website was down as of a couple minutes ago? I wasn't sure if the, if the board was aware.
Well, according to what the township officials of Illinois told me is that there was no possible way that they could provide for a Zoom for this meeting because it's open to the electorate. Only those who can get here and be here specifically are the ones who can come. But they did not provide any necessary ways for anybody to do this by Zoom.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was intentional, that's all I didn't mean.
Oh, no problem. And I know it was announced at the city council meeting on last evening on Zoom. Yes. Thank you, sir. Do we have any public participation? I have my name here, so I would have to take. I just want to say that I believe it's important for the citizenry, as they call us, the electorate, to sacrifice and come to the meeting. The town meeting is provided for us by statute and we need to sacrifice and come. And, and since, I didn't know I was going to be moderator. I had other things to say, but right now, that's all I got to say. So we are here and it's good that we are here because we, the people, are very important and we can't forget that. We, the people, are at the head. Thank you. Seeing no other.
No other public participation.
Public participation at this time. Oh, yes, come on, sir.
I need you to get one of these cards from the table in the back.
Mr. Christopher Hansen.
Yes.
May I put the date on here for you?
Oh, sure.
Can you check to make sure that your, your mic is on? Oh, perfect. I believe that the meeting is being recorded.
Are we, are we going now?
Wait, wait, do we have a clock here? Do we, I mean, do we set the? She'll watch for the time. I understand we have three minutes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All I wanted to say is that the, as of a few minutes ago, the city website was down, so the public probably wasn't able to navigate to details of this meeting. And when I viewed the meeting earlier, there didn't appear to be any way for the public to attend virtually, which has been the, the way we've been doing this for the past year. So that just concerns me because the public should be able to attend meetings. And also, there might be people who want to give public input who couldn't attend physically for obvious reasons. So that's my only concern and that's all I wanted to express. I don't know what the rules provide for in this setting. I know regarding other types of meetings, I suppose if the full board is here, then maybe you don't need to have virtual access. But I think you should possibly consider doing this meeting when the public has better awareness of the meeting and better ability to attend. But I'll leave that up to you. Thank you.
Reverend, and Chair.
Amen, thank you, sir. May I put the date on it for you, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne Williams, you're speaking as a citizen now, is that right, sir?
I am.
Thank you.
I just want to, I am speaking as a citizen, but I also have the role of the elected assessor.
Yeah, and I will be calling on you in due season.
I, not, not a problem, I look forward to it.
Yes, sir.
I, I would just like to add that this is not a meeting of the town board. This is not even a meeting of Cunningham Township. This is, township government is unique in that every year at this time, the electors specifically get to vote on very specific township issues. As such, and unfortunately, these laws were written before the idea of a pandemic, it has to be in person. This meeting is more of a, is more like a caucus than an actual board meeting in that the electors gather, we discuss, we get a report from our township supervisor on the financial state of the township. The electors can vote on the disposition of surplus property. They can vote, vote on referenda if it's on the agenda. And also township government is unique in that the electors can petition for special town meetings. So we have the annual town meeting that is on the, is it the second Tuesday? The second Tuesday in April. But the electors can get together and petition for a special annual town meeting and the powers of the electors are defined in the township code. As such, the township board has zero power today. Zero power. It doesn't matter if you are an elected official. The only person who has an actual role here is the supervisor who is to give a report to the electors. So this meeting is very different from, from all other meetings of, of any other type of government in Illinois. And that's what makes township special. I want to make that clear. That's what, this is what makes township special. No other unit of government allows for the citizens to gather together and take up the powers that would normally be reserved for the board. And I bring that up because this is a form of direct democracy that just does not exist in any other unit of government in Illinois. I bring that up because there's always calls to eliminate township. I feel that those calls are short sighted. You could say I may have a vested interest in that. But I think it's important that we know that no, this, we can do this. This is direct democracy for the people, by the people. And that's all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Are there any questions about what, the information that Mr. Williams has given us? Any questions? I think that's very important because I love democracy and we've got to protect and, and preserve our democracy. Thank you. At this time, the item on our agenda calls for a program update from Cunningham Township Supervisors and the Assessor's Office. Now, do we just have the supervisors, Ms. Danielle Chinowitz first and then Mr. Williams can come up and then do the supervisor's part? I mean, the township part? Is that okay?
That would work for us.
Okay, so we're going to hear from Ms. Danielle Chinowitz, Cunningham Township Supervisor.
Thank you. First, I want to say how great it is to see Dr. and Reverend Evelyn Underwood, Phyllis Clark, audience members. We have not seen much of each other in a long time. This is awkward situation. Last year's annual town board meeting was actually deferred indefinitely due to COVID. We were not allowed under state law to have this meeting and we would have had to petition the Public Health District to have the meeting because it is only allowed to be held in person. I don't agree with that decision of the state. I pushed hard for us to be able to have a Zoom meeting, but that, that was not upheld. So we did not, so I'm going to actually be presenting the financials for two years since we did not have a annual meeting last year. I would like to be briefer than I would generally be because it is COVID and I don't want us to catch anything from each other. So I will, and I do want to direct folks that I provide extensive and regular updates on the programmatic and finances of the township at every meeting that is the second Monday of each month. And those are available on Zoom and at some point, people will be able to come in person when it is safe. So I thought the easiest way to give a program update is to distribute this poster. It's also on our website and it basically is our impacts from 2020. And essentially, I will review what's in this document and then if folks would like copy, they can have this copy. This, last year, we had a general assistance was at $514,165,000 and we helped over, or we helped 354 households. In rental assistance, now that's our signature program. It is required by state law that we provide general assistance. It's up to the supervisor to basically set the parameters. And in Urbana, we actually support people who are not only disabled awaiting disability payments, but we also support people out of work. So Champaign just supports folks who are disabled awaiting disability payments, but in Urbana, we're a little bit different. We have a community work program that is really a workforce readiness program and we provide general assistance for folks in that, in that way. So essentially, this last year, we saw a huge spike in general assistance cases. We, we basically climbed in the first two to three months of COVID by 50 cases. A lot of those folks were folks who were laid off, some for the first time in their life. And we were able to provide that safety net and I think that was a really important part of what we do at township is you don't know what the economy is going to do. You don't know when a pandemic is going to hit. We are able to provide that assistance for folks. We have not off, we have not required any work for our participation during this year because it has not been safe. And frankly, we've told people, your work is to take care of yourself. You know, keep your mask on, get your basic needs met. There's a lot, you know, take care of your kids. There's a lot that we needed to do that was work. So our rental assistance program, which was launched in 2017, actually, I'm sorry, my predecessor launched a program in 2016. Excuse me, 2015. In two years, she supported one family with $900. I relaunched and retooled that program so that it would actually serve people in 2017. Last year, we spent $45,483 to support 75 households and 71 children. We continue to grow that rental assistance program because of angel donor funds. I'm actually, and funds from Public Health and other locations. We've been able to expand that program. We are currently at township offering up to three months of rent. So whatever is on your lease, we can provide up to three months of rent to support you. And if folks are further behind, we actually have a program and a relationship with the county to do referrals. So just to be clear, anyone who is behind on rent, who is 200% of the poverty level or below, who lives in Urbana, we are helping you, right? Even if you received rental assistance a year ago. Times are tight and that's what we're able to do. We launched an emergency housing program under COVID. We have personally spent $7,643 last year on that program. That is strictly privately fundraised dollars that went to the housing costs of that program. So we are hoping to expand that program and use tax levy dollars in the current year. We also received the YMWCA contributed $20,000 of direct to hotel payments, so it did not come through township. With that program, we supported 25 adults and 11 children. Subsidized housing, we launched a program last year that's intensive housing efficacy for our general assistance participants. Approximately 40 to 50% of our general assistance participants are homeless. We're currently at about 109 participants. Our average last year at any given time was closer to about 125. So we, last year, signed 76 people up for subsidized housing and got 14 moved in. We've, we've exceeded that at this point. We also, our office hired a disability support specialist who is 40-hour trained in helping people apply for social security disability. It is near impossible to live in this community and be disabled, not be able to work. And then how are you supposed to pay your bills? You need access to social security payments, which are an entitlement that you pay into through your labor. But it can take between one and 10 years to get access. And without support, the average runs between about three, four years. With support, we've been able to shrink that to about 18 months so that you can put in a quality application that's complete. And if you are entitled to that program, you can access that payment. So last year, we supported 32 individuals and 11 were awarded SSI payments. I'm very proud of that program. I think it fits urgently felt need in the community. Last year, as soon as COVID hit, one of the main things we heard was the need for food supports and also access to cleaning and safety supplies. I really wish the federal government had shipped masks to everybody. That could have happened, didn't, or hand sanitizer that did not. So we had to home grow. And thanks to our collaboration with Channing Murray Foundation, Solagrosha and Solidarity Gardens, well, in that year, we delivered 912 food buckets. So we also did a holiday dinner and we delivered to people's homes or to the shelters 48 dinners. Our solidarity gardens initiative, which is also a collaboration, produced over 3,000 pounds of produce that was delivered primarily through our bucket brigade. So a lot, you know, oftentimes, food pantry items are very straightforward, canned and boxed goods and they lack the healthy food options. I know you know this, Chandra, because you're in public health. It's very important that the children and adults have access to fresh, healthy foods. It's actually part of managing stress during the pandemic and generally maintaining the stress of poverty. So I, we are continuing to expand that program this year. Was announced at the town board yesterday that we're very close to finalizing a lease on a third of an acre on Wood Street and that will greatly expand our capacity to grow food. So I'm very excited about that. We did 17 grants to social service agencies, $130,000. And then there's a few other items. We do support people with utility shut offs. Anyone who has a power or water shut off, we will turn it back on immediately. Anywhere in the county that's privately funded, therefore, it does not need to be Urbana only. We helped 40 people get free phones through the Lifeline program. We helped 80 people get stimulus payment help and we will continue to provide that, that service and support during this tax season. And we distributed over 600 coats. So a big piece of last year's news was that 63% of voters voted to increase our tax levy. And when I get into the financial statements, I'll talk a little bit about this. I have provided program cards on the back. Please, if you have connections with community groups, if you could take a stack. There's some here, there's some outside in the lobby. We have hundreds more at township. It's got a lot of the basic numbers that people need, rape crisis, domestic violence services, as well as our services on this program. So I am happy to answer any questions about our program updates from the supervisor's side.
Where, where are those numbers that you just gave? Was that 2020 or 2019?
It was 2020 and it was calendar year 2020.
Okay.
And at, at the town board meetings, I give a running total. So yesterday, you know, you can see total housing advocacy clients total. So I give kind of running totals since the beginning of the fiscal year or sometimes the beginning of the program. And again, this is also linked to our website. That's CunninghamTownship.org.
Yes, Mr. Hanson. Oh, no, go ahead.
Can you mention to some extent people with disabilities? I'm wondering if the township, do you ever focus on, you know, the issue in terms of things like our sidewalks and things like that? Does that ever come up in the township business?
The township is not responsible for the bricks and mortar. That would be an issue of the city council in the city. That said, we are advocates. And so essentially, if someone comes into our office, I've had someone who was looking for a lost cat. I've had somebody who didn't need directions to the market. I've had folks who, you know, had a, wanted to know who to talk to at Public Works about a complaint. And of course, we always help direct people to the right place. So basically, we would be a referral agency in that way. And we have, throughout COVID, except for one day, we've had walk-up service during our business hours. So people can come ring the door or call us and we will help direct them. Any other questions? Okay.
I, I do have a question. This is very good. And yes, I would like to take some of this because it would be good for the people to know about this. Now, how would they know to access? What processes do you do for them to access some of these programs? Because I can see from one program, you say from 2015, from one family with $900, now it's $45,483.
Yes, ma'am.
What procedures or processes do we have in place to that the citizenry of Urbana know?
Well, we always, this postcard was actually mailed to every Urbana resident with a few exceptions, folks who are outside of some of the mail routes. So they should have received this. This is our COVID's postcard. And then we answer the phone. Surprise, surprise. So if you call 384-4144 during our business hours, 8:30 to 12:00 and 1:00 to 4:30, we'll answer the phone. And we actually, for folks in need, I find that to be the best approach so that they don't have to self-navigate. Certainly, people can go to our website. They can email us at info@CunninghamTownship.org. But I always have someone answering the phones because I feel like sometimes people have one need. It might be food, but as we talk through, childcare might be an issue, transportation might be an issue. So we find that our best approach is to develop a relationship with whatever Urbana resident is calling and figure out, you know, of all the tools in our tool belt, what can, what can we do to meet their needs? So I would say calling us is probably the best route. Or if they don't have a phone, they can come to the office. We'll help them apply for a free phone and they can also talk to us through the door.
Great, great. Not because, you know, there's so many people been calling. My husband is a pastor about stimulus payments, for an example. And I see you've helped some people with that now. Some more monies are coming in through other agencies to try to help. But this, I got a call today, you know, about, I don't think, since I don't have a job, now they're not giving us social security, I won't be able to get my stimulus payment. I said, who told you that?
Every, every person is entitled.
That person should do what?
Well, so for folks who, the best thing that people can do is file a tax return. Even if they don't have income, if they can file a tax return, that's the, that is the easiest way for them to get their stimulus payment, including back payments that they did not receive. So they can actually apply through their tax return form. And the library will have times where there are volunteers who support filers. Now, it's usually through the phone rather than in person. But I would, if you need help, you know, filing your tax return, I would contact the library because they're coordinating that piece. But if you, if someone does not file a tax return or they don't want to file a tax return, there's also a, in, at the IRS.gov website, there's a filers link. And you basically, for, for, excuse me, it's called nonfilers for people who do not file tax returns. It's a stimulus payment request. Our office has been trained, we have three people in our office trained to help people navigate that. I would say try it on your own first. If you get, if you get in trouble, call us and we'll help them, we'll help you navigate that.
Thank you. And this is going to be helpful for pastors.
I thought you might want to hang that up. So we, you know, we printed a couple of the 11 by 17s and again, the postcards. And I can make, you know, as many of these as possible if people want to hang them up.
Thank you.
Yep. And then I think, Wayne, did you have an update that you wanted to give or no? Okay, there's no update from the Assessor's Office chair.
Okay. So I don't have to call on him just he said no. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next on our agenda, since our assessor did not wish to speak to the electorate today, is our annual financial statement of supervisor for the fiscal year 2018, 2019, and 2019 and 2020. Ms. Chinowitz.
Thank you.
Is that right? Can I say that or should I say he is, I mean, her, she?
She is fine. She is fine.
Okay.
Ms. Chenoweth's fine.
I didn't know. I want to do it correctly.
No, that's fine. Thank you. So because we missed last year, I have the audit for fiscal year 19. This is on the clerk's website. It is, a hard copy is at the clerk's office, a hard copy is at the township office. And essentially, and then I have the audit from this last fiscal year, also on the website and at the clerk's office and township office. And then I have the financials from this year. I thought that might be helpful, so I printed out copies. And there's copies up on this table here of the balance statement and the profit and loss. But let me break it down to you very quickly and simply. Essentially, what happened is that we were amassing surplus in the township for a four-year period while there was record low general assistance levels under my predecessor. She had a one-four-year term. During that time, she cut general assistance from 125 people, excuse me, 175 people down to 26 folks. So that's what I inherited. My first day, there were 26 general assistance participants. That is lower than it's been since the 1970s. So as a result, during that time, the town board, you know, instead of questioning why there was such a low assistance levels, they cut the tax levy. So they cut the levy back. It was about $200,000 a year that was cut. And, you know, and there was the surplus from not serving people for four years. So essentially, what we've been doing is using that surplus to get assistance levels back to their historic levels. Again, general assistance is an entitlement. If you meet the qualifications, you should have access to it. The supervisor has the ability to, to set those qualifications. So I set the qualifications at the same kind of level as former supervisors before my predecessor. And essentially, the assistance levels have gone back to where they were at that time. So we have been deficit spending primarily in the general assistance fund in fiscal year 19. The deficit in general assistance was 383K. And it was the same in fiscal year 20. It was 383, a little bit different in terms of the pennies. So what we did is essentially deficit spend in those areas. We also deficit spent in the quad years so that the assessor could essentially catch us up on property tax assessments. This is important because it's, because if property tax assessments have not been reassessed every four years, then people don't pay their fair share. And in some cases, they pay over their fair share. And our new assessor at the time had discovered that particularly low-income neighborhoods were paying over their fair share. So it was important to do that assessment. So essentially, this year, we are also deficit spending. We do not anticipate going into the new fiscal year that we will need to deficit spend next year because we are anticipating about $600,000 in new revenue from the tax levy. So the number I have before me is about 597.9 that we'll see. So we're finalizing that with the clerk's office and first disbursement will come in May. So essentially, we are, we've done two things with our surplus. The, three things, excuse me. The first thing we did is we've served people and we expanded services. And we specifically expanded services under COVID. The second is that we made sure assessments were fair and we brought the human power in for an additional two years to do that. The, the, excuse me, I lost my track, my train of thought. The, the third thing that we did was yesterday, we closed, we signed a contract for two properties in downtown. And the fourth thing we did is to get, basically get caught up on our retirement payments. So we decided to invest to reduce our IMRF, what is called our IMF liabilities. So what that does is essentially leaves us, after all is said and done, with money in the bank to pay off Carl if we lose the Carl case, which is before the appellate court and potentially going to the Illinois Supreme Court. It gives us six months of operating expenses. It provides us a nice property that allows us to do to run our programs and save money while doing so. And we are caught up in terms of our retirement fund. So I would say although we've been deficit spending, the overall projection, financial projection for the township is very good. If the levy had not passed, we would be cutting. And the first place that we would be cutting is with social service grants and possibly with some of the assistance programs. I'm very pleased that we did not have to do that. We will be retooling our social service program to be more strategic. But we're hoping that we can continue to basically provide the level of service that we're providing now. With that, I would take any questions that folks have about the finances.
Mr. Hanson, yeah.
Is there a prediction of the future coming forward? Do you have a prediction for the future?
Well, so I can't predict the future. I thought there would be a pretty big economic crisis by now. I was wrong, so I'm not going to predict the future. What I will say though is that I, if you, if you go to our website and you click on the tax referendum, there's actually an extensive PowerPoint presentation. And one of the screenshots, and I can send it to if you can't find it, Chris, is the assistance levels going back decades. So you can really actually see dollars of assistance because our assistance has changed. It used to be half general assistance, half medical. But because of the ACA, the, you know, what is called Obamacare essentially, we, and expansion of Medicaid, we do not have the same kind of medical needs. Our biggest need, unmet need in the community is housing and affordable housing. So I think that what we're seeing is basically a decrease. You'll see a decrease in medical payments and an increase in housing payments. So in terms of assistance rolls, if we do not face a recession, I think our assistance rolls will hover around what they historically have hovered, which is between 80 and 120 participants in any given month. I budgeted for more this year and we had more, but we're actually under budget. We're running at 63% of our public, of our general assistance budget and we're at 75% of the year. So I kind of, I really over budgeted in some way because I thought, I frankly did not think that we would see as much action from the feds as we have seen. And certainly, we had an election, we weren't quite sure how that was going to turn out. So the short version is your guess is good as mine. But I think, I think between 80 and 120, if there isn't any major crashes, is probably accurate.
Did I gather correctly that you created assistance under your predecessor? You expect to make up more of your outreach than you?
No, it's about actively cutting people off the rolls because the tiniest infraction resulted in them being terminated from the program, including being hospitalized and having their doctor call in and tell them that they were in the art room and they still had their case closed. So it was, it was not a good scene. Any other questions about finances? I'm sure you want to hang out here for a while. Yes, ma'am.
A question about individuals who are helped through the program. Are they only allowed to be, receive assistance once or how does that work? Because one person came in and they needed help and then, you know, later on that year, they need more help. So how, can you balance out the funds that you distribute among the community?
Absolutely. So that's a good question. With general assistance, unless for some reason they've been sanctioned, and the only reason I sanction someone is if they stole money. That's really been the only time I've sanctioned. So they can get on and off general assistance. So maybe they made some money for a few months and then they got laid off. They can get back on general assistance. So as long as a person lives in Urbana, they made less than $600 last month and they have less than $1,000 on them in terms of cash, retirement, tax returns, okay? That's basically, then they, you know, and they're not getting cash assistance from another location. So essentially, general assistance is a monthly payment. It's a grant that helps them to support themselves during that time. And we also do significant advocacy and support for people in that way. Wayne?
I don't think you mentioned that, but can you tell us what is the monthly maximum general assistance grant?
Yes, right now, it's $300. The supervisors of Illinois recommends 304. And then usually every, you know, I just did 300 because frankly, the math is easier. But we will, we look at that with every budget. And also just to answer your question, general rental assistance has changed under COVID. So typically, we provide assistance once in a two-year period. With COVID, that was not fair and we had more monies than expected, especially from our private donations. So we are now providing assistance for multiple months, right? And we will do it even if assistance has been granted. So I typically look at how long it's been. So if it was three months ago, I may have concerns. But, you know, we are providing assistance. We don't have that two-year limit currently. That will change when, when we get past this, this situation where emergency housing, there's no limit. We do, you know, have an average day of 40 days. So people are actively working on solutions for themselves during that time. And the other items, food support. You can receive a Bucket Brigade delivery to your home once every two weeks. Because the Bucket Brigade actually is two weeks of food pantry items. So it should be sufficient for that timeframe. Wayne?
And so that $300, the people that receive that, is that their only income?
It's not always their only income, but I would say, based on the data in my office, it's typically for about 90%, it is. But what we see is people get laid off or they have a medical issue in their life or a family emergency. They get on general assistance when they have no income. And I actually raised that limit to 600 because I want to encourage people to get work and stay on general assistance augmented. And then when they hit 600, they get off. So we found when I came in, it was limited to the assistance level, which is the Toy Township Official's Illinois recommendation. I went with that recommendation. And when they made 265, which was the amount at the time, they'd fall off the cliff. Because they get, they make a little bit more money and then they fall off the cliff. And it was really difficult for them to survive with that. And we found that we actually have daisy chained our program. So basically, say you have a traumatic thing happen, you get on general assistance, you're 300. You start making money, you get up to almost $900 a month because you're on general assistance, plus you're making up to 600. You then increase your hours at work, you get off general assistance, then you apply for rental assistance to get into housing because we work with a lot of homeless individuals. So then they use rental assistance to get into their own housing, right? And then hopefully, they're able to stay in housing. If not, because income does not keep up with rent, within two, you know, two years later, we may see them come back and need assistance to pay off their rent. But that's, we've seen a lot of folks take that trajectory and that's generally what we want to see. So that's how we've designed our program. Wayne? More than you've ever learned about township than you did before, right Wayne?
What is more for other people? I would think cutting people off. Are there other ways that you may be able to transition people off of general assistance to save taxpayers' money?
Absolutely. One of the primary ways is to help them get on SSI and SSDI disability payments, which are greater than what township offers. Oftentimes, it's not exactly enough to get into independent housing, but many people do. Especially if they have a roommate, it becomes more feasible. So we have, right now, we expect to significantly exceed our budgeted income for social security reimbursement because that, you know, that helps. So typically, people either leave town, they get a job, or they get on SSI. And frankly, there's not a lot of people who fit any other category. Typically, if they haven't gotten a job for a very long time, it means that they're not in, that we should be working towards a SSI case, that they have some disability. It's usually, there may be a mental health issue or an underlying kind of, there's a lot of traumatic brain injury issues that go undiagnosed and developmental delays in adults that go undiagnosed. So in those situations, we move tracks and then help them get a disability application. So, yeah, we, I would say there's, you know, we're seeing transition. We're not seeing a lot of people sit. And if they're sitting on general assistance, it's usually because they actually have a disability. And over time, we, we discover that and help them get in, get doctored. The other issue would be substance abuse. And that's a, you know, people get into the cycle of substance abuse. And that's a hard cycle to break. And we work with our partners and inpatient and outpatient services to support that. Yes, Wayne?
And then SSI, that, if someone were to get off the general assistance or go to SSI, the SSI pay is generally more?
It's, yes, so SSI is about, I think it's 793 right now, 795 a month. And township gets paid back for the time that they was receiving general assistance.
And so?
Except for those months that they worked. If they did community workfare, they do not, they do not have to pay back that portion. Go ahead.
COVID people get off SSI, is that something your office is required to do?
No, we are not required to do at all. In fact, it's not very many township offices that do that.
Would you, would you agree with my observation that I hope if people get off of general assistance and go onto SSI, both the individual as well as the township is better off in each?
Absolutely. The entire program for, for disability advocacy is funded by SSI reimbursements. And it's very, you know, it's very cost-effective. I don't know why townships don't do it more often, frankly, you know. Any other financial questions, Chris?
How good is your tracking? I imagine with, I imagine you must just move people and not be able to track them. Or do you comment on that?
Tracking like?
The people that you're addressing. So like you mentioned, some of them live near town. How do you, how do you figure that out?
Yep, so if they don't come and pick up a check, we assume that they're incarcerated or out of town. We usually check the clerk's, circuit clerk's website to see if they're incarcerated. That does happen. Less so, I think, with bail bond reform because a lot of it is crimes of property or vagrancy, you know, that really, in my opinion, should not exist at all. Some of the minor things, people should not be locked up for those kind of issues. And we should address the underlying issues of poverty. So those, you know, we know someone's left because they tell us, because they don't pick up or cash a check, because we see them on the circuit clerk's website as incarcerated. And, and we will reach out to folks that we're working with and advocate with them while they're inside. They, they're not eligible to receive a check when their needs are met, so to speak, in an institution. But they can apply before they get out, so they can basically get back on it as needed. But in terms of rental assistance, every six months, we call through everyone. And we actually do data collection. We just finished this. 90% of rental assistance participants over the last 18 months are stably housed. Meaning they have a place that they're staying, whether it's a lease, friends and family. They feel comfortable with their housing, they've been surveyed. That's a really good rate. I'm kind of shocked that it has been that. But, you know, I'm happy to hear it. There is movement, but I do think that it, what it goes to show is that emergencies happen. And if you have a safety net that can step in in those moments and help bridge that gap, then people don't have to go through an eviction process. Actually, it costs a landlord about $1,500 to get, you know, to kick somebody out through the courts. $3,000 and $1,500, depending on what you pay your lawyer. So, you know, and it's, of course, has a huge human toll on parents and kids and families in the schools. So we're trying to really avoid those situations with our rental assistance program. As a community and township, I am proud to say has led the way in convening this group, our township. We started off, when I started, we were investing $48,000 of rental assistance for the entire county. Right? And so minus COVID, because COVID just, you know, we're talking millions with COVID. But we had gotten that up to about $250,000 for the whole county. We, we kicked in at township, so about $50,000. City of Champaign kicked in and they were doing about $50,000. We got additional dollars in to RPC. So we've really been upping our game as a community in terms of rental assistance. And what we should see when we look at eviction lab data, and I also did primary research. I pulled the data from the circuit clerks. I, I did like a bench line study in 2017. And at that time, I found out that Urbana residents were being evicted about once every calendar day. Obviously, court is not in session every- Obviously, court is not in session every calendar day, but that gives you a sense about 165 evictions. So what I want to do is, once we get past this COVID craziness, I want to look at that and see, you know, our, what does it look like in the county and in our city? And have we been able to decrease the eviction rates? You know, too bad for the attorneys who make money off of that, but everybody else benefits if we don't evict people.
So you basically identified $250,000 of the US state's spending, but maybe you spent other?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I told landlords. We did not have pushback about our tax levy from landlords. And I think it's because they've seen how much money has, you know, they've seen the savings to themselves. And I messaged that very clearly with them. You know, I mean, sometimes these are systems failures where there, once you put the pieces together and the math together, there isn't a whole lot of opposition. It's just somebody needed to step in and say, well, let's connect these pieces. So frankly, landlords are paying the township more money. And, you know, residents and renters, we all pay, and, right? Even renters pay through the rent. But landlords are definitely paying through that. And I think that we offer a benefit to the landlords in that way. Certainly, you know, it would save them those legal dollars. Any other questions on our finances? You can become experts at township. There's a quiz at the end of this, by the way. Go ahead, ma'am.
A question about, someone was talking to me, saying, I don't know what the criteria in Urbana is, but for example, if someone is homeless and they need a place to stay, and I don't know if they were on a shank in Urbana, but they said that the person had to be in a homeless shelter before they would assist them. So how does Urbana go about determining if someone is in need of housing and they are homeless? I think I've heard in housing, but I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely.
What can they do during COVID? And then outside of, what the standard is for that criteria?
Exactly. So there's two, there's two basic definitions of homelessness. So when you talk about who is homeless and how many homeless residents there are in our community, it's important to look at, are they what is called HUD definition homeless, which is constrained narrowly by Congress. There are political fights to expand that. Okay, I put that out there. But the HUD definition of homeless, which in my opinion is to make the United States look like it has a very tiny homeless population, which it does not, is to say they basically were just going to count people who are actively either on the shelter, on the streets, and we can count them on a single day that's very cold in the middle winter or in a shelter. So a HUD definition homeless means you are in a place unfit for human habitation. You are in a shelter, an emergency shelter. You are in a domestic violence shelter, or you're fleeing domestic violence. And it does, and I confirmed this recently because it is an issue, is if you are basically forced to trade sex for a place to stay. You're also considered, now that's actually that fourth area. We need to explore that and provide supports because that's probably the least supported area for HUD definition homeless folks. So there are places in the community, like the centralized intake for the homeless, that you are required to be HUD definition homeless to screen through centralized intake for the homeless. That is because centralized intake for the homeless is funded by HUD, and HUD sets the rules about what is definition homeless. Talk to your congressperson if you wanted to change. So, but we have several programs in the community where, for example, See You at Home does not screen you to make sure, like, if you're homeless and you walk in in your new place for the night, they will, they will serve you. Men, women, and transgender folks. Right? So if you are a homeless family, currently, I tell people after hours to go to See You at Home because they can do intake for our program. But we have a program and Regional Plan Commission has a program and Salvation Army has a program. So our program is the only one that I know of that is same day, right? Meaning, you know, as long as you're not coming at 4:30 in the afternoon, like, we can house you. And we, we support families who have kids in Urbana or staying at Crisis Nursery, since we are Urbana taxpayer funded. And essentially, you need to be literally homeless, but that, it's by our definition. So like, you can prove that you've been staying in a hotel and you are out of money, and you like literally do not have another place to stay. And we've looked for friends and family, and we've done this kind of counseling. In those situations, we, our program can take folks. Same thing with RPC. They prioritize people who are HUD definition homeless, but they actually can help people who are, I don't like the term couch surfing because it sounds like, you know, college students, but people who don't have a fixed place to stay and they're moving around a lot, which is a very unsafe situation for kids. So to answer your question, essentially, there's a little bit of a patchwork of programs in the community where some that are funded by federal and state dollars really require that you be HUD definition homeless. And then that's why these local programs are really important because we can be more expansive. Now, we prioritize the most vulnerable and we have limited capacity, right? But we can support people in different situations, and our case managers screen for that. You know, and we've been able, we can take up to four families right now. Actually, I say that, and we're housing five families tonight, so, you know, go, go figure.
So after 4:30, what, is it 211?
Yes, they can, they could call 211, but I would recommend that they present at See You at Home or call See You at Home. So there was a grandma with a baby on the coldest night on the quad. She had thought she had a place to stay here and was leaving, was from Chicago. And she was literally wandering around with child on the quad. And we asked, you know, we asked them to go to See You at Home. And we checked in with See You at Home, and they have agreed, you know, that you can screen with them. And we are working on a program where we'll actually pay for that hotel stay. So because of her, we're really trying to line this up so that, you know, even folks after hours and weekends, they should go to See You at Home if they have no place to stay. Any other questions? This is all good. You learn so much. I hope all of you become experts in helping direct people who are homeless. It will help us if we have more eyes and ears and people who know how to do it. If not, I am finished, Madam Chair.
Ah, yes, your question, Mr. Hanson?
I hope this is a simple question, but what was your biggest?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You said, what's your biggest challenge?
Huh?
What's my biggest challenge?
Oh, you still have a question of you.
Okay. Well, you know, I'm happy to have a beer and talk about that at a different time. But I think, I think the biggest challenge that our community faces is that we cannot see homeless women and children because it's too dangerous for them to be seen. And so for them to qualify for programs and get support, they have to expose themselves in their homelessness, and they risk losing their children. And it's a very vulnerable and precarious situation. So I would say the number one thing that I would really like to, you know, we've done a lot, as you can see, but the piece I'd really like to work on these next four years is, how do we provide trauma-informed and sensitive and support and confidential support for women and kids outside of the domestic violence realm, which I think Courage Connection handles very well, right? So like folks who are just, you know, they're straight up poor, you know, or they had something happen to them. How do we provide that kind of support for them? I think there's a lot of, a lot of insecurity and fear. And I would say the other big challenge is, is just, you know, I would say the invisibility of sexual violence and its long-term impacts on people's lives and its connection to homelessness and housing insecurity and lack of employment. And, you know, Jaya, who's here, is more of an expert in that arena than I, but I look forward to learning from you, Jaya.
Okay. If there are no more questions of our township supervisor, we'll go to our next item and regarding the financial statement, that is. Number eight, resolution declaring personal property of the town of Cunningham to be surplus in authorizing the sale of disposal, sale or disposal of such properties, 2021.
Thank you, Chair. So there are copies of this as well. It's a resolution declaring personal property of the township to be surplus. And I'm actually asking for the authorization of donation of such property. And I have to buy, like, it's a very long process to get rid of things, which I appreciate because it means you can't just give it away, you know, to anyone willy-nilly. It's important to have that accountability, but it is a process. So the first part of the process is that you, the electorate, actually allow me to donate the things on this list. And then I go through a process of requesting from the state permission to dispose of certain properties. And then I'm able to dispose of them. Actually, the permission from the state, I think, is around documentation. So essentially, there's a list here, 20, this is all items that are used that I want to give away to a not-for, to not-for profits. Most likely because of COVID, I will make a list, and I'll have people basically just, you know, open it up and people can say, yes, I'll take that. 20 chairs, one reclining chair, have no idea how that got in there. Five printers and copiers. We're still checking to see if they actually work, but I had to list the total amount. Two desks, four metal cabinets, two filing cabinets, two lamp shelves, one drafting table, four, which I think was the assessors, four wall dividers, one router, two rolling tables, three trash bins, one mail slot shelf, one desk chair pad, one of those plastic things, one footrest, three electric typewriters. Yes, I would love somebody to take the electric typewriters off our hands. Three adding machines, window blinds that do not fit. And there are miscellaneous office supplies, which I think Idea Store would be very happy because they're very weird. But, but yes, we will, basically, they're consumables. So what I'm requesting is for someone who is amongst our electorate to make a motion, basically moving this resolution. And then I believe there would be a vote of the electorate on this. I'm happy to take questions, if you have any, before we move forward.
Do you want to get a motion on the floor, or do you want to ask questions first?
Sure, we can get a motion on the floor.
Okay. May we have a motion? Mr. Wayne Williams moved. Do we have a second? Second? Okay, are there any questions? I have a question.
Sure.
If this is passed, and you're allowed to give this away, you mentioned nonprofits. What about churches? If there's some churches that needed to give some of the members in their church some of these things? I know this is not much, but I'm just asking for clarity.
As long as a church is a not-for-profit corporation, because that is what's listed in the resolution.
Now, a church can be a not-for-profit.
Yep, so as long as it's a historical society or not-for-profit corporation. That's what ILCS Section 80-75 allows, so I guess.
Did you say now?
It's a, it's a, the statute and the Illinois state law is Section 80-75, and this line is directly out of that statute.
And what did it say?
It says, you can, you can donate.
I'm looking at it right here, it's right here.
Yeah, you can donate the property to a historical society or other not-for-profit corporation. So I will investigate that before we move forward.
A church can be that. So there are some churches are considered not-for-profit because they got that status. I know for a fact. But if they didn't have that status, would they be able to be included in there?
They wouldn't. It would just be who fits the statute.
Okay, so it would have to be a historical society, other not-for-profit corporation. So if, in fact, they had that status, which I know that they can and some do, but some don't need to because of another statute that's on the books related to churches. So then they wouldn't be included because if they didn't come under these two, ILCS Section 80.75, then they wouldn't be included. But I was just wondering.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yes, my, I'll release the question. Any other questions?
Could you come up with an estimated value of the items?
It's in the resolution, it's less than $2,500. And I can tell you, it's certainly low.
I expect what you're going to be hoping to do is a much more valuable thing than you did.
I'm not allowed to throw away, like, a desk without, so no, we don't. We've been pretty thrifty throughout.
Because I remember when the Housing Authority gave away, you know, a lot of, they had so much to give away, and there were so, you know, many. We couldn't, because I don't think we had that status, but we did talk to some of the most neediest persons in our church and told them to go to try to get some of those things, you know. So I don't know if we can do that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that we could donate to Empty Tomb. And Empty Tomb is one of the few places in town that gives away things for free. And they are also on a regular partner and mailing list. So I think for folks, for individuals in need, I would always encourage them to go to Empty Tomb.
Yeah, I know, but sometime, there are so many rules now. They're setting up so many rules, just like Salt and Light. You know, there's, because there are some members of our church who wanted to get some things there, but they, and some was kind of on drugs. And they called me because one of the members, you know, had them call me. And I was not going to lie for her, you know, because, you know, and so I said, well, I can't talk to you right now. So I got in touch with her, I said, what are you saying? You know, and she said, well, I mean, so many, I said, but you shouldn't have to lie to get help. You shouldn't have, because it's a lie, you know, and I can't support that. But maybe you come to pastor, and he's seeking, he helped you some other way, but you're not going to go to Salt and Light. And they put you in a position where you got to lie to get help. So there are some organizations, you know, they are, would come under this, but they got some rules, so many rules. And of course, people shouldn't have to lie, but they shouldn't put people in a position because if people on drugs, you know, they'll try to do anything to get help. And I don't know, I don't know. But I'm just saying that sometime, there are so many rules and so many things that are unnecessary for the people to get help. Hopefully, with COVID-19, we see now that it's not as bad because I know a lot of the very neediest people and some who are addicted, you know, they're somehow, they have some people who are trying to get help for those people. But anyway, I'll leave it at that. Are you ready to vote? Any other questions? If not, are you ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by the sign aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Nay. The ayes have it in sort.
Thank you, Chair. So the time and place of the next annual town meeting will be, again, second Tuesday of April. It'll be April 12, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Otherwise, I believe we're adjourned.
I think we have to vote on that.
The vote for adjournment or the vote for the time? Oh, thank you, Wayne. I, for some reason, I thought that was just an announcement.
So we have to have a motion then? For the time, or time and place of next annual meeting, 6:00 PM Tuesday, April 12, 2022. So, so we just have to carry it like this because they stated that, but they didn't say a place. So assume, would it be?
The place will be determined later because then we'll see whether or not we're capable to come back here. Probably we will be.
Okay.
It's something that we're going to have to wait for. So we need a motion and a second.
Okay. All right, as is. So we're going to state it as here, and we all have the agenda. Time and place of next annual town meeting, 6:00 PM Tuesday, April 12, 2022. May I have a motion?
A motion.
Mr. Williams has moved, second?
Second.
Elder Melinda Carr seconded. Are there any questions? Any questions? Are you ready to vote?
Aye.
Are you ready to vote? Yes, okay. All in favor, let it be known by the sign aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Nay. The ayes have it in sort.
And if there's any more business before this?
Are there any questions, anything? If no more business before this body? This electorate, I like that. This electorate, I like that. Then we'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
You don't need a motion.
Oh, don't?
You can declare that as the moderator.
Okay.
Take us on.
You can declare that as the moderator.
Oh, I can declare that. Okay, at church, we vote, we, at church, we do it. Okay. But so you can tell me at church and the organizations that I am a member of. But you are in charge here, so we, we don't have to, I can just declare it?
Yes, declare it adjourned.
Okay. If there is no other business before this body, I declare that we are adjourned.